Okay, I see Mickey, so I think we're gonna get started here. Welcome everyone to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, March thirteenth. Remind everyone that the meeting's being recorded. It will be available on the town's website within the next couple of days. Gonna start by taking attendance. Dave Hatfield?
Here.
Chip Tarbell?
Here.
Joe Pride?
Here.
Mickey Feely? Mickey there? I can see you, I can't hear you. Well Mickey is there because I can visually see him.
It says I'm trying to log on.
Okay. Greg McIntosh?
Here.
Kusumi Humphries?
Yeah.
And my name's Tom Lucy. I'm obviously here. And with that, I am going to ask our clerk to read the legal notice for the meeting.
Sure thing. Consist with the governor's order extended certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number: 1-301-715-8592. Meeting ID: 85954517577, passcode: 588824. Please only use dial-in or computer or not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and/or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you're a person with a disability and require information on materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact Town Disability Coordinator, William Renaud, Town Engineer, at 781-246-6308 as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your requests. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One continued hearing. Twenty-four dash thirty-five, Charles C. Curran III and Caroline A. Curran, application for determination and/or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article Nine, Section one ninety dash fifty-eight of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. To construct in addition onto an existing single-family dwelling, the property is shown as Map Three, Lot Puzzles zero-zero-B of the assessors map and is located at Three Outlook Road, Board of Appeals.
Thank you Joe, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mickey, you up and running?
Yeah, you see me?
Yep, all set.
All right.
Okay, first up is the continued hearing, and it so happens, the one continued case we have is the first one. We received a letter from Attorney Brian McGrail dated today. We got Northeast Warehouse Boston LLC, three Melvin Street, case numbers twenty-three seventy-seven, twenty-three seventy-eight, twenty-three seventy-nine. Please continue this matter until your meeting on April twenty-fourth, and that we are working with the Department of Public Works and the Division of Engineering on items and information requested by them. The current extension for the board to render and or file decisions through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Please let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decisions until May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you for your consideration, Attorney McGrail. I know this amazement that things worked out and from what I'm hearing, that we should be able to take the matter up on the twenty-fourth. So this has been continued for a while, but I think it should reach for resolution by then. So with that, looking for a continuance until April thirtieth and an extension till May thirtieth.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that we continue this application to our April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four meeting and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to render a decision and hold a public hearing until May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seeing on regular voting members, Dave?
Here, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Matter's continued. So next up is case number twenty-four-ten, the residence at Nahant LLC. Mr. Panos, I see you on the screen with your architect.
Good evening.
You ready to proceed?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jason Panos. For the record, practicing law at two forty-sixty Andover Street, Puberty, Massachusetts. I'm joined with the project designer Stefano Basso from SB Design. And if I may go through a couple of administrative matters. So we've obviously met with the zoning Board of Appeals Subcommittee both on February eighth and March eleventh. We submitted the traffic impact analysis that was prepared by Vanessa and Associates to this board and the TAC on March sixth. We're still waiting for a hearing date. And as a result of the subcommittee meetings and discussions we've been having, we were able to submit to you a redesign concept just yesterday. Also, we're going through somewhat of an engineering transition. Tony Capocetti, who was our principal project manager and engineer, has left Hays Engineering. So while we go through that transition and figure out where Tony left off, we're hopefully gonna be focusing more on design and traffic. And then hopefully catch up on the civil engineering side. I know there are a couple of outstanding items that Hays needs to work on or their or their transition replacement. Stormwater management plan is among the items I know they were working on as a result of the concept redesign. We need to also engage in a parking plan redesign. Because as you will see, the building is proposed to be shifted more to the center of the property. So that that obviously will result in a in in a revised parking plan, and there are some other things. And I know that Tony met with the town engineer and the DPW, and they did test pits. And I'm just trying to get caught up on the result of that that interaction. So please bear with us as as that unfolds, and we'll be able to get more data and information to the board. But if it pleases the chair and the board, I'd like to go into the presentation materials unless you have any questions.
I have one quick question. You confident that Hays Engineering is going to take you on?
I'm sorry?
Are you confident that you're remaining with Hays Engineering and that they're gonna continue to have you as a client?
Hey, Hays Engineering is we we still have retained Hays. We're looking at our options right now. But Hays has indicated a willingness to continue on the project. We're just trying to get caught up and to see where Tony left off.
Okay. Any other questions, board members on that? Hearing none. Why don't you proceed with your presentation, Mr. Panos?
Excellent, thank you. And we did prepare a PowerPoint, but it it is based almost entirely on the on the material submitted to you. And if we can, just in brief, give you a redesign introduction. So the revised concept plans were developed based on feedback received from the town through its various boards, departments, and offices and the correspondence related to this development proposal from the ZBA and yes, from the neighbors. The redesign I wanna emphasize is in the beginning stages, as the residences at Nahant Project Team continues to refine the building and site design to endeavor to address certain town concerns regarding emergency apparatus access and massing to produces a design that fits better within the character of the neighborhood, among other things. And so what you will see tonight is basically a layering. A base layer of a concept that we will continue to build upon with the materials that I indicated. If you could go to the next slide, please. So this is this is a kind of a thirty thousand foot view of the redesign, the dotted red outline is where the proposed is the originally proposed building location. And then you see the purple and blue and orange shading, which is the current proposed concept, which centers the 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 building more toward the middle of the property and pulls it back off of Nahant Street from, I believe, about four to five feet at its narrowest now to twenty-seven feet at its widest and Stefano does then say eleven feet up top. There's a line going right through it.
This one?
No.
This one?
No. The next one.
Here?
The one on the left. No, the one to the left of the twenty-seven. So that says fifteen, nineteen feet. Okay, so at its narrowest, it's nineteen feet. The prior proposal had it had it four or five feet at its narrowest. And so as I indicated, we need to redesign the parking plan. But we still achieve with this plan the same parking ratio within a space or two, and we're still playing around with with the parking count. But within a space or two from that which was originally proposed at one thirty-five. Next slide, please. So Stefano's gonna talk you through a little bit about the design features resulting from this redesign. And show you some of the show show you some of the concept design. So I don't know if you wanna show the the plans as you are walking through the narrative.
Sure, probably easier to be looking at the plans here. So thanks, Jason. As you mentioned, the revised proposed design pulls the building back away from Nahant Street a little bit and slides it over to the right of the site more towards the middle. We still have a portion up along the street that runs parallel with the street. Provides a good street presence there, street edge, and then a longer section running back away from the street down the site. The portion in the front here is a four-story part of building now with three levels of housing above one story of parking. The back leg here is five stories, so keeping a similar overall massing for the project. We've moved more of the massing back towards the rear of the site, allowing for a full fully four-story piece along Nahant Street. The yellow areas on the side here are the entrance lobby. So having a full driveway loop around the building with two curb cuts allows for fire apparatus to enter and exit the site without needing to turn around. I know that was a major issue that we were looking at before. So we provided access into the building from both the left and the right side of the parking areas. There'd also be some resident amenity space down here in the lobby. As Jason mentioned, we're we're still working through the civil engineering side of this. So the final layout will probably look a little bit different. But in concept, we're able to fit about a hundred and thirty-five, maybe a couple spaces less with this scheme. I also wanna note, just on the plan here, before we get into the exterior views of the building, we've noted, we have two elevations. We have one looking at the the side of the building here labeled driveway view. So that's a view of the four-story piece of the building that you'd see heading west on Nahant Street towards the downtown or pulling in the driveway here entering the site. And then the hot street view circled here is a partial elevation around the corner of the same portion of the building. So the feedback we got from the ZBA Subcommittee was that we should look at the building in concept and start with this front part of the building. So that's why we focused on those areas. We met with the ZBA Subcommittee on Monday, reviewed these plans and elevations, and we got some comments back, one of which was to make it clear which portions of the building we're showing. So these are the two areas that we'll be looking at. After tonight, we'll be continuing to develop the design, and we'll have views all around the building showing it in its entirety. But to start, this is just a initial concept.
And if I may, that will also include three-D rendering similar to what we prepared for the original proposal where you will be able to see a picture of what the building will look like along the Nahant streetscape coming from both directions. I know that was something important to the board and to a lot of the neighbors who wanted to see how this was going to look in comparison to other buildings and dwellings around it. Pardon the interruption.
Yeah, no, thanks. Yeah, we'll definitely, we have some photos from the street on the other side. So we can pop the building into those views, so you can get an idea of the scale and the context and how, you know, how much of it's visible now that it's been pulled back and what it looks like. This is a typical upper floor plan that shows the unit layout. It's pretty similar to the concept we had originally with the double-loaded corridor units running throughout. Not not too much for us to look at here. So looking at the exterior views, the biggest change was we're asked to incorporate sloped roofs into the design. So if you recall previously, we had a flat-roofed scheme. A lot of brick cladding running up the building. We were trying to tie in more of a mill building architecture. And, you know, the feedback we got is that what the board would like to see here is more of a residential design. Get rid of the brick, incorporate the sloped roofs. So these concepts elevations are sort of testing how the architecture on the building might look as we get into coordinating around the building. We'll try different options. Try different combinations of siding types and colors, changing up the roof line. So you'll see a fieldstone base on the garage level at the ground floor. So we're thinking, you know, rather than the the red brick that we had before, the fieldstone seems to be working better with the neighborhood and will help crown the building a little bit. We're using classic New England-type clapboard colors, weathered wood color, light dark gray, white trim, keep the black windows that we had. We have the sloped roof detail at the top of the building. We also are incorporating at the fourth floor line, another sloped roof wash. So that would be a standing seam metal roof that would kind of wrap the building. And helps to break up the massing of the building going up. We're incorporating some bay windows at strategic locations. So, you know, you might see a bay window, and it bumps out on the fourth floor, too, and the roof line wraps some accent details. We're incorporating some balcony bumpouts to also help add a little bit of depth to the facade. We're looking at some box bay bumpouts that would be more like a shallow one-foot projection off the building, again, to provide a little bit of change in siding and trim. Those could be opportunities for Juliet balcony. On the right side, this is an idea to, you know, not have a continuous slope roof at the top. We might interrupt that at strategic locations with partial flat-roofed areas that would have more of a cornice line. So you can also see some shadow lines going across. So on the front of the building, we have some step backs to add depth to the facade. So these are, you know, four to six-foot type step backs. I'm gonna jump back up to the plan really quick. So you can see you know, some of these areas where the building is coming back to get a little bit of depth on the street, a little bit of variation there.
And if I can just add, because the building is pulled back by about twenty feet or more, it will not have the imposing presence on the Nahant streetscape that was of concern by members of this board and and the the neighbors. It will also allow us to create pedestrian improvements along the sidewalk for what it is right now. We can actually construct a sidewalk. We can, we can do things that make access at least to the to the site a little more pedestrian-friendly.
Yeah, so that was the comment we got. People definitely wanna see a sidewalk running along the length of the property. So we've included in this sketch the street edge here. The overhead wires are set in a strip of grass about two feet wide, and all the poles, at least in our section, are within that strip. So by pulling the building back, we have space for good sidewalk and more substantial trees. Now, that was a comment we got previously. So now there's space for some full-size trees and other plantings in front of the building. You can see on on this side, we're just kind of testing different colors. At the end of the day, we want the whole building to be cohesive in its feel and its material package, but at this stage, we're testing different options. So this one does have a brick base, but you're gonna see the fieldstone option moving forward. And same same general idea. At the center of the building here, we have the two-foot bump in. We brought back the standing seam metal roof wash here at the second floor line as a little detail. And more of the bay windows and balconies that helped to add a little bit of depth and texture to the facade. The top story, we're typically leaving a lighter color to help make the building feel a little lighter. So we tend to go with a white or lighter color siding than the the base on the top level. So you'll see that coming back. At certain areas of the garage, we also will have openings as we did in the original scheme. So as an open parking garage, we'll have openings for airflow, and those will get a metal, a black metal railing for security, but those will be open.
So that's the basic design concept, and we're happy to turn it back to the board for any questions.
If you could stop sharing, I'm sure folks are gonna ask you to click back on. So if you can just be ready to be a little bit nimble going back and forth. If folks have questions, I'd appreciate it, but it's hard for me to call on anybody if I can't see their faces. All right, members of the board, Kusumi, I see your hand up.
I have a couple questions on on the last time I asked about the mailroom and package room. And I still don't see that in the plan. It's just a lobby leasing and fitness. Are you do you have a plan for mailroom and package room?
I'll take this. No, not yet. As I indicated, we are going through a redesign and we are giving you base layers of that redesign. So it's too premature. Part of the reason why we've been going back and forth and we took the time we took is because the design team, Stefano's firm, had to basically make sure that the apartment units fit within the new reconfiguration of the building. So we're we're simply not there yet, no.
But the mailbox comes with the apartment. You have a hundred unit or whatever the unit numbers, but if you don't have enough space for the mailbox, you don't get mails. It it I I do, I I do this, so I think you should think about it while you are in the schematic design phase. But the other question is, where are you? Where are you planning all the residents come into the building? On the east side or the west side of the building?
So there there would be a doorway on both both the east and the west? So people people will be able to get in from either side. We don't have the area broken down into more specific programming, but there is a good amount of space. In this section, we have seventeen hundred square feet. So the mail and package room, you know, probably is somewhere over here, but residents can get in from from both sides here and also in from from the garage. But it's still still a work in progress in terms of the the exact layout.
Okay. The next question is, so I think you're saying this project location is like walkable to downtown area, commuter rail and stuff. If I live in this building, if I come in, come outside of the building, I have to walk the driveway to go to the side street on the Nahant Street. To me, like, it feels like the stair behind the elevator should be on the Nahant Street side. So if I'm like walking out from this building to walk somewhere, I want to directly going out to the Nahant Street, not like walking when somebody else is driving out from this property.
Yeah, that's a that's a good comment. I think we could we could do that, or we could incorporate a sidewalk for pedestrians who are in the lobby. Because if people are going down to get their mail or something before they go downtown, they might pop through here anyway and then work their way back up to the street.
Okay, yeah, if you don't wanna move the stair, I I'd like to see like side, like safe sidewalk around the building to get out to the Nahant Street.
Yep, okay.
And then how is that parking spot working? It said thirteen parking spot on the the left side of the plan. Like if somebody's on the four spots on the very left, if somebody is else is parking in front of you, you can't, you can't get out.
Yeah, so the tandem spaces will be assigned to the same unit. So those would go to a two- or a three-bedroom unit. And they would be shared.
Okay. My last question is, where are you planning to have like a building address? Because on your Nahant Street elevation is, I don't, I I still think it's too big, first of all, but like, how how does people know what the address is of the building?
The numbering will have to be worked out with the fire department, who does the nine-one-one. So I think it's too premature to answer that question. Right now, the frontage of Nahant Street, I believe, is one nineteen and one thirty-seven. So one nineteen would be on the left-hand side of what you're seeing, and one thirty-seven is on the right-hand side.
Right, but what I'm what I'm saying is your your entrance to the building is behind your entrance to the building is behind that four story building area. So you don't, and I'm sure you're gonna see the building number on the lobby door. But like, how how do you know from the street sign?
Are you thinking in terms of like a monument sign that'd be visible in the driveway?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think those fit in this neighborhood. It's all like a single family houses around there. I I don't see like like the signs. It's like almost looks like too commercial.
Well, we can, we can work with the subcommittee and the board to to determine how that'll work. We're obviously amenable to, that's a detail where we're amenable to accommodating the the town.
Okay.
Again, I again, the the fire department is going to have to weigh in on this because they're obviously going to have to be able to physically identify the building in the event they're called. So we're open to that discussion and by no means have any conclusive ideas on that right now.
Okay, um, my last question is why you have the the trash out? I don't know. It seems like to me it's a little too close to the resident parking spot if the garbage truck is coming around and the trash people is taking out like the trash for hundred unit. Um, that's all my, that's all my questions and comments.
And to answer that, one of the additional layers will be to provide the board with a an ingress egress plan that will break down ingress and egress for a trash truck, your largest fire truck apparatus and an Amazon type delivery truck. So you will be able to see how that traffic will circulate through the site and into and out of the sun. But again, this is a preliminary concept plan and we're not there yet.
No, I get that. I I get how the truck goes in and out. I'm just saying is the one of the region parking right in front of the trash. It seems like I, if I'm assigned to that spot, I don't know if I want to park on that spot because I know like the trash trash people is gonna take all the trash in and out, like right next to my car. That that's all I'm commenting.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that, but I see a spot that's all half marked.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do see that.
How's the truck getting to it? Projects like this have a dumpster area out in the parking field somewhere, not in the building. So just think about where realistically where the trash needs to be located on a project like this.
Yeah, I do. I agree to that, too. There'll be a lot of trash.
So we're showing trash chutes with the compactor. So the compactor would feed dumpsters within the trash room that would then be wheeled out when the truck arrives.
Okay.
I'm I'm good for now.
All right. Again, can you stop sharing? So I can see, Joe, you got your hand up?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah. Thanks for taking the time. I appreciate where you guys are heading with this. I appreciate the subcommittee. I think it's heading in the right direction. I I still think it's a little too big. My first comment is parking. You have a hundred and thirty three spots and a hundred and forty six units. So if everyone has one car, you're 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 done right there. Some people can have twos. I mean, I understand some will have none, but do you have a plan? Are you going to restrict parking for people with with the studio apartments or the one fit, one bedroom? Because if everyone has a car, where are they going to park?
That's an excellent question and the parking scheme proposed is addressed in the in the traffic impact analysis. And we will come up with a more developed parking plan for the residences. But yes, it makes sense to restrict parking depending on the occupancy of the unit. So a three bedroom unit, for example, will have more parking availability than a studio. And how that gets assigned and doled out, we're just not there yet, but but we will be.
Okay, and then it's been, you know, brought up in other projects, the visitor parking, we're gonna need at least a few of those. I mean, this 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 many unit count, you're gonna need a handful of visitor parking. I mean, one or two is not going to do it. So that's going to eat in to your parking. But what else do they have here? You guys mentioned the massing plan. You gotta get some some renderings. Don't forget about the people behind. It's important for the people on the street, but there are some people in the back. I'm sure they're gonna not want to look out their back window and see a huge building. So they're gonna want to see what it's going to look like behind their window. So don't forget about them. But can you, can you, one more question I had on, and I know your site civil guy is not here anymore, but if you want to bring up the front elevation?
Can you sync?
So I don't, I don't know if you thought about syncing the parking at all. I just, I don't know. I just feel like that's a lot of gray at the bottom. So I don't know if you could, if you could dig out and go at least halfway, two feet under instead of having everything. I don't know what that wall would be. Is that eight feet right now, parking wall?
Yeah. I was thinking the same thing. So I was thinking the same thing as I was drawing this. And this has just a floor to floor. So the grading is a little bit higher at the street, but uh, I'm I'm thinking what you are in terms of how can we try to cheat the building lower and every six inches or a foot that we can steal would be to the good.
Yeah, I mean, if that's eight foot of gray stone, if you get four feet out of that, I mean, that drops it four feet. I mean, I, I personally like to see the floor off if you could, but I mean, it does look a lot better with the roof lines and all that. But I mean, dropping it would, that would take up four feet of the building. Also, any, any, I don't know if you could add any design there that matched the windows above it on the balconies. Just like I said, it just seems like a lot. It's just a lot. I mean, that's only half the building or two thirds of the building. So I don't know, something to think about. If you could drop it and then maybe do something with the stone. I don't know. Maybe if it's just, maybe if it's lower, it's not as much stone. You know, so maybe you don't need boxes to to match what's above it, but I don't know. That's that's basically what I had in my, uh, my notes there. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we'll take a closer look at the topos when we get this in the computer and start modeling it for real. And we'll see what we can do. I think being setback probably helps us to put the grade on the street being a little higher.
Being setback, yeah, because the property, I was just looking at the topo in relationship to the originally proposed concept design and the the property definitely slopes back from Nahant Street. In other words, you have a lower grade back to front and you know, we'll have to look at, obviously, what kind of, what kind of what the nature of the property is at Nahant Street and what we can do to maybe regrade, but it's a, it's a great point.
Real quick, I mean, not having, not having renderings of the 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 overall neighborhood. I mean, that's going to help us a lot. I mean, just seeing this picture we're drawing out. You know, obviously, you're trying to, you're trying to get something to us. I understand that, but I mean, this, this, this compared to the neighborhood, I don't even know what I'm looking at. I mean, I'd have to take this drum with me and and drive down the street with it. It's the only way to see what's going on, but.
Don't worry about doing that. Once, once we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's all.
Uh, what I was going to say is we are going to give you the kind of three dimensional design and imagery that you're looking for. So you won't have to do that. I mean, you'll go through mental gymnastics trying to figure this out with what you have. Again, it's basic concept and we'll be developing it more over time. Hopefully, over a short amount of time.
Thank you.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't sure.
Dave can go.
Dave, go ahead.
I think Greg's hand was up before mine.
That's fine. You're a more important person than I am.
Oh, please.
Go for it.
All right, uh, where do I begin? I don't know. First of all, I'm just struck by the hand drawn things. I don't think we've ever seen hand drawings for a project like this. I don't know what the thought process was. I don't want to see them anymore. If we're going to continue down this path, they need to be professionally rendered drawings every single time. There's no way I or perhaps other board members can make any judgment whatsoever about what this building potentially could look like, let alone the neighbors based on hand drawings. Like you were describing it, but I just, I'm used to seeing stuff professionally produced from from, you know, CAD drawing software, whatever it is. So I I respect the request that we don't get these anymore. I can't make any judgment on those. Second, what are the date of the drawings that you showed? You said these were updated designs? When were they updated?
So we reviewed this with the subcommittee on Monday.
No, the other, the site plan, you said the building was moved back and moved to the middle of the site. When did that happen?
That was done around the time we first met with the ZBA subcommittee back in, what did I say, January eighth?
Can you put that plan up?
I mean, February eighth, pardon me.
Can you put that up, please?
Sure, one sec.
Yeah, not those, the the actual haze.
Yeah, the first one.
Yes. Yeah. What's the date on this plan?
He didn't, he didn't update the date. It says March twenty first, two thousand twenty three.
Yeah, and there's some revisions there that say July of twenty three, so.
I know, but it was done well after that.
All right. So again, respectfully, we need to see these kinds of drawings, but they need to be updated with dates. We're going to have several sets of these most likely over time. And they need to be properly dated and stamped, okay? This clearly has been updated since July. I went back to the original application.
Yes.
And these have obviously changed, but the dates weren't changed. So we need, we need to see that happen going forward as well.
We can add, add a date to this and resubmit it so you have it on on record.
Well, it's a, it's a haze plan, so we'll go back to them. Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
But any drawings, any plans need to be properly dated because they're going to revive over time. We're going to need to compare and see changes over time. We need them properly. You know, all right, so that's just a couple of, overall, project's still too big. You know that. You've heard it from all corners. You can move the building. It's fine, you know. There's not enough parking. I mean, you, what do you have, one thirty five? And per the bylaw, you need a hundred and fifty five. I don't go by the one point five for comprehensive permits. I still go to the bylaw and and use the number based on one, two and three bedrooms. You need a hundred and fifty five spaces for these, and some of those would be designated visitor. It's just too big. The unit count has to come down so that you can have adequate amount of parking because people aren't going to be able to park on the street. Any overflow resident parking, guest parking can happen on the street. So it has to happen on the site and you got to have enough parking. The only way to do that is to reduce the number of units so that you have enough parking spaces for those units. So again, one of the other things that would benefit from reducing the overall mass of the building is just more outdoor space. You put a big building like this, a lot of units, you need some amenity space for the for the residents. I I see a little bit of potential, but not enough. Benches, grills, something, you know, something where the residents and their guests could congregate outside in nice weather. We've done this with other projects. It it becomes an important part of these projects to not just have a big building with parking and a few trees. Right? And a little bit of green space on some islands. Actual outdoor amenity space would be a key component and part of something I would be looking for, and I imagine other board members would be too. So you got to be thinking about that. Okay, and that means again, maybe reducing the mass of the building to have enough parking and introduce some amenity space. I believe the meeting in February, we had requested that we get the PowerPoint presentation that was presented that night. I don't know, Mr. Chair, if we ever got it. I don't know that I got it. We need to be getting these materials that are presented at the meeting. I know we're getting some stuff in advance, but we just got some of this a couple of days in advance. But we need to be getting the the materials that are presented during the hearings as well. So if you can look back at the meeting, I believe from February fourteenth, and send us that material as well as what's been presented tonight. And I'm just looking at my notes. So the traffic study, we're not going to get into it tonight, but my notes said that we expected that to be ready for the February meeting. We just got it on March seventh, or at least I got it. I know the chair got it the day before. And they're still going to schedule a meeting with the TAC. So this is just taking way longer, right, for something that we thought would be presented early on, if not with the original application soon after. And we're now just getting it a month after you thought you'd have it for us. And we still got to meet with the TAC and still have a full hearing on that discussion once we get the the peer feedback from the TAC. And, you know, this, this thing has been extended through June, you know, before you know it, we're in well into April to even get the the TAC feedback and have a meeting. Could be even early May. So the clock is ticking and this stuff's taking way longer than it should. So I don't know. I have concerns throughout this project still. I I don't know what what else to say at this point, based on the information presented tonight, Mr. Chair, but I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Greg?
I'm not going to belabor the point. I just wanted to, I think we heard some comments about design and stuff. Uh, but I wanted to, you know, have someone go on record and say the easiest way to make it fit into the neighborhood isn't design, it's shrink the project, make it fit the actual neighborhood. You know, until we hear that this actually works, to me, I I don't understand how this is even going to work in this neighborhood from a safety standpoint. And then maybe just a a tip as you look at the parking plan, maybe look at our decision. Was it Mike's gym? Was it North Ave? That has a good condition on on parking and who can park where and what you have to do. So maybe work that into your plan. But yeah, easiest way to make it fit in the neighborhood is to make it a project that's in complement to the size of the neighborhood.
Okay, anybody else? Marie, we're gonna have public testimony later in the meeting. This is just a discussion between the board and the applicant at this point. Chip? Anything? You're muted, Chip. Well, I'm sorry, Mickey. You had your hand up. Chip, while you're on mute, I'll go and let Mickey go ahead.
Now, can you hear me? Oh, I thought I lost my hand for a second. Couple things. Greg was very judicious in his speaking, as was Dave, but it's it's way too big. But regarding the, we approached it a little bit, the parking size spaces, those are still eighteen feet wide. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how long, nine?
Yes.
Basically for compacts.
Uh, no, they're compliant with the ZBA, with the, I believe, with the zoning board regulations on parking space size. They're standard size spaces.
Have you, in in your traffic studies, have you coordinated what would happen with those tandem spaces and how that works out, how they back out? Is that accounted for? I mean, I, it's two hundred and some odd pages. I've I've read the executive summary. I poked through the rest of it. But is there any sort of thought as to how tandems would actually work? Turning radiuses, backup plans, anything?
Beyond the assignment to the same family of units, no, I mean, the tandem spaces are proposed to be the same size as all of the other spaces. I'm not sure if I'm not sure, uh, if Vanessa Associates has a, has addressed that, but I can certainly ask them to, uh, be prepared to talk about that at the, at the TAC here.
Um, I will, there'll be, a couple of little things. Will there be pets allowed in this building? And why does that matter? Um? Because there's going to be a lot of pets walking around where there's absolutely no green space or. Uh, it's strange. I went to pets instead of people first, which I should, but I'm just talking about amenity space. Place for people and their, their, uh, family to breathe. And I'm not even getting to the fact of neighbors, um, having this on top of them, but it's something to think about, um, areas where, um, there can be some sort of outdoor activity at all. The other one is, I'd like to know what happened to the engineer. Did he leave or did he, um, not want to do the project anymore? Um, is
No, he's, he's left his engineer.
He's left age and, and he, you don't know where he left off.
Well, I, I really don't want to get into that, but, but he's not even in the industry anymore. He's, he's not in civil design.
So do you have an engineer for this project?
Uh, we're working on it and Hayes has expressed a desire to continue, but we're, we're trying to figure out where Tony left off. And that's all I'm prepared to say about that.
That's all you're prepared to say? So we don't have an engineer at this point in time for this project?
We do. Hayes Engineering is on this.
Um, and when is, when is the tra- uh, transportation, um, the TAC committee meeting or have you asked them? Have you called them for a meeting?
Yes, we're still waiting for, we're still waiting for a date.
When was the letter?
Uh, Scott Thornton, our, um, traffic engineer from Vanessa and Associates has been coordinating with Lieutenant Anderson. And I understand that he's also the traffic engineer on thirty-two Nahat. And he's also waiting for a date for that. And I think his thinking is, uh, don't quote me on this, but I believe he'd like to consolidate both into one if possible, uh, or, or have the hearings on the same night. In any event, um, because a lot of the connected data is the same.
Well, I agree. There's some connected data that's the same. These are two very different projects. And because you're, because your traffic engineer wants to consolidate it all into one night is not a great answer for me. Um, we need this two months ago. So we need to be a little more on the hop, something better than, I just want to consolidate it so it's all in one night. I agree that there's, there's shared data here and that will be helpful, but it's not a shared project.
No, it's not.
All right. Um, that's it. I want to, I want to thank the, um, the subcommittee for getting us this far. I'd like to see better drawings than that. Um, I understand that, um, no, nobody wants to spend a lot of money until they're further along, but I've yet to see a project that has nothing, um, draw, uh, nothing, a little more concrete on paper than hand, hand drawn. So it's frustrating. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Chip?
Yeah, I'll give a quick review of where I thought we, we stood and I think you guys have, have, we wanted you to see what has happened to date. I think some of the, and, and we've said it before, and it's no, no surprise was it's too big and that real discussion can't happen. Uh, the, the, the design team has chosen not to have that happen until TAC has reacted to, uh, their, their report. So although we would love to have had more conclusive direction and massing discussions until that TAC report happens, uh, we really can't. And with, uh, the haze change, you know, the, 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 it's all in concept now. We don't really even have a, a site plan that, that talks to the shift of the building and site that's, that's engineered. We have it as a sketch. Um. So I'm frustrated because, because I know we, I would agree with many of the comments that we're not as far along as we should be, and, and that certainly concerns me. So, um, that's where, if that helps at all, uh, I think it just confirmed some of your guys' comments, but we wanted you to see where we were at to date.
Thank you, Chip. Um, I guess I'll close with this, uh, um, beyond frustrated and I'm beyond concerned about where we are. Um, you know, I, I agree with Dave. I have never this far into a project seen such rudimentary sketches as a potential design. Um, they did move some massing, but again, they're not willing to discuss massing. So the moving of the massing was the shuffling of of some deck chairs on the Titanic here. Um, you know, I'm a little worried also, not a little worried, take little out. I am worried. There's a pattern here with this development team that, you know, we'll start with the traffic study. There was a commitment that would be done in February. On February eighth, there was another commitment made to Chip and I that would be ready within a day or two. It came in a month after that. A month after that. Um, also this development team made the representation that, that the traffic study was late to accommodate the town. I asked them to produce that evidence of that. They produced some emails back and forth, Lieutenant Anderson and Mr. Thornton. They don't reflect that. So Mr. Panos, if those emails exist, I'd like to see them because I don't want to be misled or appear to be misled by this development team. I'd like to see those by Friday because you
I'm confused as to what you're looking for, Mr. Chair.
I, you stated on multiple occasions and in writing that there was an email to Lieutenant Anderson back in twenty twenty-three regarding a scoping for the traffic study. No one can produce that email. Lieutenant Anderson doesn't have it. Your reason for delaying this traffic study this deep into the process? You've made several assertions on that. I'd like to see the email on that scoping.
I, I don't believe I ever indicated there was an email. I
I can show you your email, Mr. Panos, and I took notes at our February eight subcommittee meeting. That's two different times you've made that assertion. And I'm very concerned about that.
Email? Of course, there was communication between Tony Cappacetti and uh, the DPW and the engineering department about how this would proceed. He was told, whether it was in writing or an email, I have no idea because I was not copied or a part of those discussions to wait until the TAC had a scoping session. They held their scoping session in December. Whether that was done by email or over the phone, I have no idea. I've never made a representation that there was a, an email chain about this. And I, it is not my intention to mislead this board under any circumstances. I'm just telling you what I was told that we were fully prepared to give you a rudimentary traffic impact assessment with the application. And we were told, or at least Mr. Cappacetti was told, don't waste your time and money because the TAC is likely to have very specific thoughts and ideas as to what they would like to see and how they would like to see that TIA uh, scoped out. That's, that's all. Whether that played out by email, I doubt it.
Well, I do have emails copied from Lieutenant Anderson, so I do have some detailed history of this. And I strongly disagree with your assertion that you didn't reference that in an email. I'll share it with you. I'm just making a larger point. On this design, same thing, the delays here. When we met on, with the subcommittee on the twen- on February eighth, you represented that we would see these things within a day or two. They're now a month later and they're very rudimentary sketches. How, after a month, if the best you guys can do is two very rudimentary sketches, how are we going to move forward in a timely fashion? If it takes a full month to do two sketches, two sketches that I agree with Dave, I've never seen that anywhere. Not only in the Wakefield Board of Appeals, but in all my other regulatory work outside of this board. I, I think it's disrespectful, quite frankly. Um, and I, to be this far in the process and not have professional rendered architectural drawings, even with your unwillingness to discuss massing, I think is a major problem for the town. Another thing that I asked you that I'd like to see, you know, within your application, you state you've, um, put together a very experienced team. We asked very specifically on two occasions about the experience your client has with this type of projects. We got a very vague answer. If your client has done projects of this scale and of this type, you got to know the address. You have to know where they are. I'd like you to share those with us. I think board members and our neighbors would probably like to see what your client has done for projects, either in other towns or wherever that is. So if you're, if you're hearing some frustration, I hope you are because, um, I don't see how you can't see it from our perspective that it appears with this type of delays on everything we've asked you to do from traffic and questions like clients to design, how it doesn't appear in some ways, whether meant or not, that you're running the clock out on us. So I'm really concerned with that. Um. And, uh, I'm probably going to be talking to town council about how we can maybe put some things in, in writing to hold you to a, a more strict schedule, uh, to get these materials, because if we have insufficient materials to render a decision, I don't see how we can go forward with this, Mr. Panos. So, um. With that, that's probably enough. Uh, at this point, board members, any other questions or comments? I'm going to open it up to public comments. If you're here to comment on this application, I ask you to use the raise hand function on Zoom or to make some indication so I can call on you. Marie, please go ahead. I need your name and address. Marie, you muted?
Uh, okay. Can you hear me now?
I can. Thank you.
Okay. Marie Olivera, two sixteen Nahand Street. Um, I've, I just have one big question. As I look at that view on Nahand Street, it looks to me like a big box store. I don't care how you dress it up. I, I was shocked that there wasn't a lovely main entrance going in. Um, it, for, for that and that alone, I think it will become a big, big eyesore. So that's really all I have to say about that.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. There's someone with a hand up labeled Stonem's iPad. If you could give me your name and address, please. And you're muted. If you could take yourself off mute. Stonem's iPad, can you move forward?
I'm trying.
Okay.
Sorry, I brought something home from work I'm not used to. Can you hear me at least?
I can. Can you give me your name and address?
Yeah, Karen McMaster, twenty-five Nahand Street. Um, I watched the meeting the other night and, you know, I didn't say anything, but I feel strongly the same way. I don't think we're being taken seriously by showing some of the drawings they're showing. Nothing's really changed from the beginning. Um, it just seems like a jumbled mess back there. There's, I mean, if you're going to have somebody that has to pay money to live there and have two spaces where you have to move to let your wife or your husband out, you, you're just cramming stuff in everywhere. It's, it's just way too big. It's, it's enormous. Um, I think if I counted all the residences, there's probably a hundred and six resident houses on the Han Street right now. You want to double that. That it's just, it's, it's, it's about beyond me how we can even look at this project. It, it needs to be way, way lower. Um, so I guess I get frustrated when I listen to the materials again. We're not even close to what we should be looking at at materials. Or, I mean, a hundred and fifty-five parking spaces we have to have, which means that potentially people could be going in and out of there. Now add dumpsters, now add Amazon deliveries. It's just, I can't even, it's not even just Nahand Street. It's the whole ten mile area that's going to be impacted by this. The supermarkets, everything. Um, that, that's really, I want to say, I just don't think the development team is really listening. I think they're listening to their client, which I understand, but they're not listening to the other people around them. And even, either their client doesn't listen to us either. Um, that's probably it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Conway, I see your hand coming up. Can you please unmute yourself?
Yeah, the, the question I have is, uh,
Can, please start with your name and address. I'm sorry. We have to do that for the record.
Okay. Thanks for having me. Uh, my name is, uh, Joseph Conway. I live at eighteen Wilson Road. I'm, uh, one of the director butters in the rear of the project. Um, a couple of questions I have is that, uh, first of all, I've heard about lowering the grade on the front and, um, lo- lo- lowering the parking lot under the building and so on and so forth, but if you do a sidewalk out there, you come out with the neighbors, there's a lot of blue ledge back there. I don't know if you're aware of that. So changing that is going to, uh, be significant by itself. Uh, the other thing I have is I've been, uh, watching most of these meetings or attended as many as I can. There's two questions I'd like to know is can we have this in a, a forum where all the neighbors and everybody that was concerned for Wakefield can come to the meeting instead of doing this on Zoom? That's one question. And the other thing is it's my understanding that the meter's running on this, that a decision is supposed to be made by somewhere in the, uh, first part of the middle of June. Is that correct?
I believe it's still at the end of the month, but June is correct. Mr. Panos, do I, as, do you agree with that? I thought we were at the end of June.
Uh, the end of June, yes.
So my point is this, is that I've watched all these meetings, tried to go to as many that they've had live or on Zoom. And I guess what I'm getting is that nobody's prepared. It's not prepared. All these things, they say that they're prepared, but nothing is set up and in stone, I guess. The design, for me, living directly behind the project, I'd like to see an actual plan uh, of what you're going to build, how close it's going to be to my property. Uh, I heard it tonight about, uh, dumpsters and trucks. That's on my side of the building. How close those dumpsters or the dumpster site is to my house? I brought up before and I said it wasn't for, uh, discussion or earlier meeting about drainage. Well, there is a serious drainage problem down there on the backside down behind. And without having the actual plan to see where the building is going to go, I got a real concern about that. And then with the meter running, and if you say that there has to be an answer or a permit issued by the middle of the end of July, I got a problem with that, knowing that none of these meetings have gone very far at all. We haven't really seen a design of the actual building. The engineer, you don't have an engineer? Where are we going? How can, how can you say these things without having an engineer? Or showing us the neighbors where the actual thing is going to go? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Panos, that, that has been, um, a point that's been brought up several times. So when you do get your civil engineer, I do think it would be helpful to do a site visit and invite some of the neighbors to that. Uh, so if you can just put that on your list of things that, uh, we're going to want to do.
But, Mr. Chair, just if I can interject, um, to also, um, address this question. These meetings, these ZBA meetings are not in a position where we can hold one in person at this point, right? Even if we wanted to, right?
I, I'm going to double check with the town because, uh, what happened at the first subcommittee meeting, the first time we had something in person, about forty people showed up. So there is a desire for people uh, to participate. I think Zoom is a barrier to some. Um, as evidenced by the fact that when we, tell you the truth, I thought it was just going to be the development team and Chip and I, and forty people showed up. So, um. I'll double check on that because I, I think it's a reasonable question and comment.
Sure. If, if again, it can be in a room and be a hybrid situation, I thought that's what was sort of holding things up is our ability to hold a meeting of that nature. But if it's possible, then, and we can do it, um, in, in a timely fashion that helps everybody, that'd be great. So yeah, maybe just test.
I'll ask. I think technology was holding us back before, Dave.
I, I think I've, I've heard a rumor that the public safety building room is getting close to be able to do that.
Okay.
I mean, not to go on a tangent, but I think we've been told that for what, four years now?
Well, at least one that I'm involved with, but. Well, at least one that I'm involved with, but cuz we funded it through the public safety building.
I've heard, no, not from you. I'm not saying that from you. I'm saying, I, you know, other people
No, 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 no.
For like four years.
We actually, we actually funded it about six months ago.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, points taken. Anybody else here to comment on this? Uh, Paula Gardella.
Hi, it's uh ten Wilson Road in Wakefield, right here. And I just wanna agree with absolutely everybody, all the board members and my neighbors who called in. It's just gigantic. There's no other word for it. I've said it in the forum. I'll say it again. It's an elephant in a matchbox. It does not fit. Uh, you need to cut off at least one level, even two. You gotta cut the thing in half to make it. It's probably, seriously, five or six times the size of my house. So to put in pers- perspective, the three D is a great idea, Jason. Please follow through with that. We wanna see what this thing is gonna look like, but how do you make a three D structure when we still haven't even decided on what the thing's gonna look like and how many units there is? I get frustrated as everybody else because it seems like the developer is feeling very confident this is a done deal. This, these, these things they're putting up, this is how it's gonna look, this is the way it's gonna be. And I feel like it's getting rammed down our throats. I feel like it's getting rammed down the town's throat, the neighbors' throats. And I don't think the town of Wakefield in general understands how much this building will impact the entire town, not just us, everywhere. This is a major crossing. It goes across the entire town. That needs to be looked at separately, but that's it. It's too big.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Let's make sure no one else is okay, not seeing any uh proceed.
So uh, and I don't wanna belittle this point, but we're at a new starting point here. Uh, and this notion that we haven't produced any design plans, floor plans and the like is just inaccurate. Uh, we had a full set of design plans.
I, I don't, I don't wanna get into this. I, I, the list I ripped off is empirical fact. I looked it up. I've seen the tapes. I've seen your writing, so it is what it is. We'll just, if you wanna disagree, you can have your own opinion. But you don't get to set, have your own set of facts, Mr. Panos.
I'm, I'm not implying my own set of facts. What I'm telling you and the board is we put forward an application with floor plans and the design that where we had three D renderings. We are changing that now. Okay, we're almost starting from scratch, not from a site development point of view, because the engineering, the site is the site. But we are redesigning almost from scratch this whole project from that which was originally proposed. And that is out of accommodation to the comments we've heard. And yes, we are prepared to discuss massing. We're not prepared to discuss a reduction in density. I wanna make that clear. Okay, there is a difference. And what we have put forward and what we are about to develop and to Ms. Gardell's uh comment with regard to our question and plea with regard to C, the three D renderings, they will come just as they came before. But we're not there yet. We're at an initial redesign. A, 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 almost full-scale redesign. So this notion that the board and the town is seeing for the first time a, a project proposal? No, you're not. You're seeing part two. You're seeing a redesign and we're trying to accommodate the concerns that were articulated to us with massing, yes. We're not, to be clear, prepared to discuss a reduction in density right now.
Okay.
The data is not there yet.
Mr. Panos, you've said that same thing a hundred times to me.
I, I know, say it a hundred times again because it's not
That's enough, Mr. Panos. You're no longer recognized. Mickey, do you have, wanna add a comment here?
Um, no, I'll be quick. Um, I I, I, I don't think him, uh, Mr. Panos speaking anymore on this topic um is gonna be any more helpful. So, and, or nor me. So I will, I will leave it there.
Okay. Greg, did you have anything?
Yeah, just a question to Mr. Panos, acknowledging that this is sort of the, the beginning of a process again and, and a, a redesign even to accommodate your own team, then would you be willing to extend from June thirtieth at this point already? We've, you yourself have mentioned that you're at the beginning again. Uh, you know, I, I don't think you want to rush the project either. So it seems to me it's in everyone's interest to uh, you know, extend the deadline so you can also do the proper work rather than have to submit hand-drawn uh I don't even wanna call them renderings, but I guess that's what we'll call them.
It's a fair point uh through the chair and I'm in the process right now of regrouping with the design team, particularly SV Design, who, the reason why these renderings, these hand drawings took as long as they did was, I think Stefano, and correct me if I'm wrong, called it kind of a game of Tetris, taking the unit layouts and making sure they could fit uh within the uh footprint of, of the redesign that we put forward. And that took a lot of time. Uh, and while it doesn't bear out in what we presented tonight, we still need to make sure internally that this concept even works. So we're still getting an idea now uh from SV Design, how long it will take to come up with the three D renderings, the full set of floor plans for each of the um, each of the floors, how the trash compactor area, the, the mailroom, all of those things will lay out. So that is going to take time. And when we've assessed and I, we're having these discussions now, after we've assessed how long that's going to take for them to, to do that, we're more than open to entertaining that commensurate extension of time. Is that fair?
Yeah, it'd be good to have that sooner than later because some of the
Of course.
Some of the tension in the room tonight, Mr. Panos, is that one hundred and eighty day clock.
Yes.
I think the other tension in the room is when we can have the discussion of a reduction in density. I won't call it massing anymore. I'll use your terms, Mr. Panis, a reduction in density. And to have you guys do three D, if you're never going to do a reduction in dens- density, and you've already determined that, no matter what the TAC comes back with or anything else, then that's a whole nother direction that you need to go. But if you are willing to contemplate a reduction in density, then to do these three D drawings and redesigns and stuff, until you determine what that is and how much that is, it doesn't make any sense. And I, I'm not trying to just have you spin your wheels to spin your wheels. The, the, the discussion about a reduction in density, if it's ever gonna take place, needs to take place before you do any more design, in my humble opinion. Because I'm not trying to waste anybody's time. Um, and to have you go do all of this and then decide you're gonna take a floor off, and I don't even know what the number is, or one unit, two units, that again puts you through again to the beginning. So I, I, I guess I, until the empiric, as you have stated, I think until the empirical data shows that a reduction in death, density is necessary, I don't know where we go.
But it's a good point, Chip. It's a good point, Chip, because if the TAC and the public safety officials deem necessary and the project wants to comply with our public safety officials and the analysis of the TAC that will result, would, would result in a reduction in density, here we are too. So I've been trying to make that point. I'm, I'm blue in the face for having said it so many times, but here we are.
So I would just, I would, Mr. Chair, I would, I would ask that that Mr. Panis gets with his development team. There's a, there's a number of things. Yes, we're kinda back at the beginning. But he should think about when, when there can be a conversation, if ever, about a reduction in density. Two, when Haze can get their act to pull together to find a new engineer for the project or see who's gonna take it over. And, and three, to answer the questions by the design team of what it's gonna take to play Tetris, as, as Mr. Panos had said, uh, for the future designs. And then kinda come up with a game plan to correct point of where do we go forward? Um, so that, that's my comment.
I would add, Chip, that I think that conversation has to happen now, Mr. Panos, so we have a game plan going forward. Cuz I'm not
I'm sorry, I'm just looking for clarity of which conversation on density?
That Chip just outlined three or four things for you guys to contemplate.
Mm-hmm.
You guys should have that conversation.
Yeah, not looking for answers tonight.
Right. But it will impact, you know, what are we gonna talk about in two weeks, right? What are we gonna talk about a month from now? We know traffic's coming. There's no date for TAC. So obviously, that's on our agenda for as soon as possible. So
So here's, here's what I would recommend. Um and I, I think I mentioned this, and this is for your consideration. Uh, obviously, I don't control your agenda. Um, and I don't seek to. But what I, what I might consider is to give Stefano enough time to more fully develop his plans, because it's a chicken or the egg, right? Uh, in order for us to engage again, as you put it, Mr. Tarbell, um in, in that density reduction conversation, we need more, not only more data, we, we, we need a plan to put forward. Um, because I've, I've said it and I, and I don't wanna come across as lecturing the board. Forty B is designed with regard to the density discussion to address the density discussion at the very end, when you identify problems that but for density cannot be solved. And we're, we're, we're simply not there yet. Okay, we are waiting for the TAC. There's more than just TAC in design, obviously, too. There's there's stormwater considerations. There are a whole number of things that we're gonna be working through. And we can't do our stormwater management report uh because we're moving the building. So we, we can't tell you where the stormwater infiltrators are going now uh, un- un- until, until we add those layers to the plan. So there's a lot more to give you for consideration by engineering and your DPW, not only TAC. Uh, and again, once all that information and, and uh data is compiled and analyzed, and there's gonna be a lot of given, given, taken, back and forth. And if there's that elephant, that density elephant in the room, and that density elephant is we've identified X problem and but for a reduction in density, you can't take care of X problem. That's when we're prepared to have that conversation, but we're not there yet.
Having a project engineer would be helpful.
I'm sorry?
All those, all those topics, having a project engineer would be helpful.
Critical.
So ha- we'd like you to have one.
Well, we, we do have one and we're trying to figure out the transition internally through Haze.
Okay, Greg, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, just to make suggestions, so we're not going round and round. You, you'd sounded like you were gonna make a suggestion about the agenda. I don't think that happened though.
Sorry.
Was, hold on, my suggestion is gonna be
Yeah.
At the very least, come back to us. I think it's more than enough to expect. Here's our proposed timeline. With next time. And it needs to be concrete, not a, well, we might have this, or we might have that. It, it needs to be concrete. And then, that's all I was gonna say until you brought up another point. Every other project we've done, we've done, you know, I think I've only been with the board six years and we've done multiple forty Bs in that time. They've come to us pretty much fully baked, that we've been able to have that, everything prepared. The drainage is done. Yeah, there might be tweaks. But that, we're prepared to have the density discussion, knowing that is the problem. So this, you know, uh, it's done at the end. You know, having done several over maybe that's how you do it, but that doesn't seem to be how everyone else does it.
In twenty-two years, that's just the, where, where density falls. Uh, it's the way forty B is designed.
But that's Not to a labor point, that's not.
Done it differently. I, I can't speak to that.
Different developers, different lawyers, they've all done it where it's at the beginning, no, it's the elephant.
I, I would say, yeah, let's not go in circles here, but I agree with you, Greg.
Sure.
This development team is, it, having dealt with many forty Bs, you guys are the anomaly uh for Wakefield. That being said, uh, I agree, that's where I was going uh before Chip had laid out some pretty decent ideas, Mr. Panos, for you to go back and talk to your development team. Um, I'm happy to correspond with you in the meantime about whether you're not, you're ready to come back in the two weeks. But I would think in two weeks, you could come back with an update on your discussions, hopefully with some more clarity on who your civil engineer is and, and the things that uh Mr. Tarbell outlined. Do you think you're prepared to do that?
So what I was going to recommend, and I, I apologize, I lost the forest through the trees, uh, that we meet with the subcommittee in the two-week interval, and I had mentioned this at our subcommittee meeting, and we continue this hearing uh for, for a month. But if you are prepared to listen to a conversation or have a conversation on simply status in two weeks, I think we can be in a position to, to have that conversation. It just won't be very substantive on the details of the of the, of the proposal we design.
I wouldn't even call it status. I wouldn't even call it status. I would call it concrete timeline.
Sure.
That's what I was referring to when I said I have to talk to Mr. Mull, and we need definitive timelines. Because we're not, these, these things are slipping and the commitments that are being made are not being met. And we need something very concrete.
And, and with that, with that, Tom, I would in- include the things you've asked for a number of ti- times. I'd like to know exactly who the development team is, what they've done, and other projects I can look at. So I can see the experience they have and, and possibly even look at how that process has gone. Uh, and then to know who and I'm not gonna lay it out, but to know who the engineer is and, and a concrete timeline, uh, given that you might not know when the TAC meeting's gonna take, but, but you can make some assumptions. You know, if it takes place by this time, we'll do this. And show us how you can get us to the end of June with having a project we can, we can react to.
I, I plan to reach out to Lieutenant Anderson tomorrow, and hopefully we'll have an answer on when that date is.
And Greg.
And I would say, I wouldn't be willing to continue a month. Everything needs to go to the next meeting at this point. It's not us that's, that's delaying anything.
When's the next hearing?
Two weeks.
Weeks from tonight.
Puts it at the twenty-eighth, right?
No, twenty-seven.
Twenty, sorry, I jumped the deck.
Yeah, at this point, Mr. Panos, I think the full board could hear that. Um if you have problems with that, let me know. In the meantime, that was another problem with from February eighth until March, we didn't hear peep from you. And you were just passing your deadlines and promises that, to, to produce materials. If there's a problem, if you let us know, we at least know what's going on.
Sure.
Absent that, all I see is you passing deadlines without meeting your commitment. So anyway, I think we have
Mr. Chair, just to that point, I mean, it, we, I, I'll speak for myself on this, but I mean, if they miss two weeks, I'm fine with that, as long as they extend their time, two weeks, under a hundred and eighty days. Or if they, if they wanna wait a month, that's fine. Just add a, add thirty days to the hundred and eighty days. I mean, I think, you know, for me, I'm willing to work with them, as long as you're willing to work with us with the hundred and eighty days. You know, I think the timeframe is, is what, like, as someone said earlier, it's, it's getting everyone batty.
And again, that's, that's a discussion he needs to have with the owners and the development team. Cuz I don't even know if they're on these nights, listening.
But it's important we keep things moving forward. So I would agree, we should try to continue the two weeks. See where we are. If there really isn't anything substantive, Mr. Panos doesn't have the information that is being asked tonight, and he continues it for two weeks. But I think we need to keep it on our agenda every meeting, whenever. Unless there's an agreement to go to back to subcommittee for some discussions and we table it a little And we table it a little longer, I think we need to keep, keep the drumbeat going and try, plan to meet at least every meeting. And see where it goes. And once we have a concrete plan, and if that timeline suggests and. Um, that we probably do need to extend, which we probably will. Uh, then we have that conversation later. We don't have to have it tonight, we're covered through June.
Yeah.
At least.
Okay.
So.
I, I think that's a good summary date of, of where I'm at, and I think other board members are at. Um, so with that.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we move this, uh, hearing to our March seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting. Back to where we are at that time.
Motion's been made seconded. Any comments? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey, you're muted. Thumbs up will do. Mickey's a yes, I vote yes, matters continued. Again, Mr. Panos, communication's key, so. We'll plan on seeing you on the twenty-seventh, unless I hear from, that there's some major thing going on that makes that impossible.
And you may be able to give him some feedback on T A C after your conversation with.
I will, as soon as I have that, I will share it with the team. I'm sure they're anxious to get that done too.
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on. Yep. Thank you. Moving on, case twenty-four thirty-two, twenty-four thirty-three, Samuel Madison and Sarah Madison at ninety-three Spring Streets.
I thank you. Good evening to Mr. Chair, members of the board, for record attorney Brian McGrail, representing, uh, Sarah and Samuel Madison, ninety-three Spring Street. Um, and, uh, this involves a, a couple of additions that the Madisons want to do on their. A single family dwelling located at, uh, ninety-three Spring Street. Um, the application. Uh, entails a finding request, uh, and also a, uh, variance request. Uh, since, uh, I believe, um, the, uh, unique circumstances for this, uh, uh, variance request will be based on. Topography, I'd like to start with a few photos of the existing conditions of the site. I think that might be helpful just to orient the board, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So this is the, um, this is a textbook, um, situation with topography. Um, you can see that the, the existing house is built on the, on ledge. Uh, it has, uh, tough stairways for access, and that's kind of a lot of stuff that's going to be addressed. I'm going to show you another photo. Kind of gives you an idea how it's really kind of built on a hillside and on ledge. And maybe one more. That really kind of, I think, uh. Orient you, if you see this side of the building. Where my cursor is with this window and door, this is facing towards Spring Street as we go to the plans. This side here is facing to, uh, the driveway. Now I'm going to go to the, uh, site plan. The site plan was recently just updated with a couple of tweaks, Mr. Chair. I'll send that to you and to Gail, as was the architectural. So I'll send that out to the meeting if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. So, um. Not only does this, um. Property have unique topography, it's got unique shape. Um, so this is, the house is set back here. On, um, Spring Street, it sits behind ninety-seven. Um, which is pretty far away, as you can see, the, the depth of ninety, uh, you know, back from Spring Street is a hundred and twenty-one feet. Um, so it's the, this is the, I will follow, if you follow my cursor, this is the lot line. Um, and it comes back over here. And then it abuts a paper street, which is forty feet wide, meaning it hasn't been developed, it's private. Um, they own to the middle of the street, so that's where the, um, engine, that's where the engineer put the lot line, because that's where their record title would be. But for setback per- purposes, the deed description is here, I'm going to blow that up for you. So you can see, so this dash line here is the deed descri- description. And that's a six point five feet, and that's one of the requests for a variance that we have here. Um. So, um, we've highlighted the addition that they want to do. Again, you saw, you know, that portion of the building facing. Um, um, Spring Street, which I showed. Uh, what they want to do here is they want to build a deck and the deck will actually be on the second level. So provide kind of emergency access from that level that they don't have now. And then because of the topography, these stairs that you see, um, superimposed, those, those are existing, they're going to go away. So that there's like an existing wood deck there that will be removed. And then the new deck that you'll see in the architectural plans, they'll act, it will actually, uh, go on to a, a concrete landing, so they'll just be able to walk right off the deck into their yard. With no stairs. Um, and then they also want to put, um, um, a, um, covered porch, concrete foundation with some proposed steps, so. As you can see, it's really, it, as you saw, it really kind of harshly comes out and you'll see in the architectural plans and they, and they want to make the stairs. Um. Kind of winding to get down now to deal with the topography and an addition on the back. Uh, I'm going to go to the arch- architectural plans, but before that I do that, I think it would be helpful to explain the relief that they're requiring in the, in the civil plans. As I've mentioned, it's a non-conforming lot. Um, there's a, there's a zoning table, uh, I must confess, I've never worked with this engineer before. Uh, a nice gentleman, but a little bit of a struggle. It took a lot of, lot of effort to get back here. Uh, get here, and it's, it's not the standard I usually like, but, um. I got it as far as I could, and I think it's, it's good enough to work with, at least from my perspective and hopefully the boards. Um, so the minimum lot area is, uh, is twelve thousand square feet, uh, it's a conforming lot, although odd shaped at fourteen two eight. Uh, minimum frontage is a hundred and only has, uh, eighty and change out here on spring. Um, lot width, um, he puts provided, uh, one oh seven. Cause that's the widest spot, but it does not comply with what, what with, it's non-conforming. And it actually gets worse with the addition. So that's an intensification because as you can see, it goes down to seventy-two, the lot narrows. So the addition, you know, the distance here, it, it's going to be an intensification of the, of the, uh, lot width. Um, the front yard setback is, is based here, this, this setback here of six point three. Um. Right here, that's not a front setback, that's a side setback. So the, the front line is here, so this, this here is an entire sideline. Then you get the rear, then you get another side in the front, so that's six point three is a, um, side yard setback. It, it needs, it only needs a finding because you already have an existing wood deck to be removed here. So it's going to be an intensification because it's going to go closer. Um, the relief in the back as you, as you, uh, as we go down, so that was a six point three on the side. And he referenced, um, eight point seven. Um, but again, I think that can be dealt with with a finding. On the rear is where the issue is and where the variance is requi- required. Uh, because it's obvious that the house meets the twenty-five feet. Um, from the rear lot line at this point. Um, and, um, what we're looking to do is to go six point five. So we're looking for a variance. Um, we certainly, as mentioned, have the topography, the shape. And virtually no impact, uh, from anybody. As far as these neighbors are concerned, it meets the fifteen foot setback where the addition goes. There's a pond on this side, no, no neighbor, and there's really nobody in the rear because we have this paper street. Um. The, um, I mentioned what with, and I mentioned the variance on the rear, so that's kind of a, a, a summation of the, um, of the relief. And I'm going to go to. Hang on a second. Okay, let me go to the architecturals.
Brian, before you hit the, uh, actuals.
Sorry.
There's a wood fence on the site plan, is that remaining?
Let me see here, hold on, sorry, Chip.
I don't know that it has any bearing on anything, I'm just more curious than anything else.
Okay. Let me just bring it back up quick.
Cause it's kind of through the middle of the lot.
Where was it, Chip?
If you go. You enlarge this.
Yeah, hold on.
You'll see the wood fence, it, it comes. And. Encapulates the shed that's on your paper road.
Oh, that fence?
Yeah, is that?
Yeah, that's going to stay, Chip, yep.
And does it matter that it's not on their property?
No, I'm not worried about that. I mean, it's a fence.
Okay.
But, you know, that's my position. Um.
Okay.
You, you see, you see plenty of fences that kind of go over lot lines every now and then.
Yeah.
Point well taken, though.
Okay.
Okay. So the architecturals, um, this is looking at the property from the driveway side. Um, kind of this shing, this sided siding area, that's kind of where the addition is because they're putting this porch in. And this is really the big part of the addition in the back that's, that sticks out. Um, but you can see what I talked about, how this is going to help with the topography, because now the stairs come down in an organized fashion, just instead of straight down to get down. And then this is the deck that faces Spring Street. And that is the deck that on the backside will go right up into topography that you won't even have stairs coming off it, you'll just be able to walk right off of the deck. This is just a foundation plan. They, these, these folks, um. These plans are pretty, a lot more detailed than you would normally see for a zoning board because they were ready to go con- to construction. And then, um, the, uh, they had been amidst, um, um. Either the contractor or the, or the engineer thought that they could do the setback to the middle of the paper street, not the back lot line. And when the building inspector pointed out, no, it's the lot line, not the middle of the paper street, even though you might have an, uh, an ownership interest in it. That's what triggered the need to, to file. So they were, they were ready to pull building permits and move forward, so these are fairly detailed. This is just, um, the foundation plan, and this is really the, the, the crux of the addition off of the right, and then you have. The deck isn't even shown here. First floor, you're not seeing the deck either. Um. And that's when you start seeing the deck because it's up on the second floor and you can see the, um. Look, you see here, hang on, try to blow this up a little bit. Just bumps me out, but in any event, there it is. That's the level landing pad that I talked about coming off of the deck. And then this is the addition where there'll be a living room. Covered porch addition. And then they're doing a lot of work on the inside of the house, obviously, as well. Here's your deck on the second level, and they're going to have bedrooms upstairs in the, in the second level of the addition. And that's a roof plan again, which really isn't, uh, relevant, but it's more for building permit purposes. So this really kind of. Lays it out to start here, the proposed right elevation is the driveway side. Again, this is the deck facing Spring Street. So this shows you the stairs coming down, um, as far as an elevation goes. Um. This is. They call it the front because it faces, uh, towards Spring Street. You see the deck with the landing and how that's going to look on the second level. And you can really see in this architectural plan, the, uh, drastic, uh, topography. Uh, it's shown here. How it falls off. And you can also see that in the front and the, the necessity for this porch addition to, to kind of work with the topography. This is the left elevation, which, um, as you've, you can see, this is the, um. Deck that faces Spring Street, so from Spring Street, this is the left side or the opposite side of the, uh, driveway. And here's the main portion of the addition. And this is just the, uh, rear elevation. And that. That is it, uh, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to, um, answer questions and bring the plans up, um, as needed for board members if, if they want to.
Sure, just before we do that, I do have some correspondence from the boards, thought I would read them in quick, as folks are thinking about if they have any questions. Got a letter from Chief Michael Sullivan, Wakefield Fire Department, day of January thirtieth, he's reviewed the application. They have no objections to the project. Got a memo from, uh, the conservation department from Elaine Vreeland. Um. Dated February tenth, on behalf of the Conservation Commission, I've reviewed the application submitted to the board. At the subject address, the project lies within the jurisdiction area of the Wetlands Protection Acts, Mass General Law, chapter one thirty-one, section forty. And the applicants are required to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. Thank you for your, does that happen, Mr. McGrail?
Uh, so where we are on that, um. That's interesting because, and I sent an email to Elaine Vreeland because I think you know Rebecca's no longer working for the town. Um, but when, when I got this, um, project back in January, when they determined they needed a variance, I also mentioned to my clients at that time. Gee, I think you might have some conservation issues because you've got a pond. So, you know, so if we're going to do this, we want to do it in a parallel fashion. Um, so I sent back in, in January, I called Rebecca. And I sent the plan to her and I said, could you review this from a jurisdiction perspective? Um, and let me see if I can share this. Can you see my email?
Yes.
Now, okay. So you can see back in January, now I called it spring ad, but it was this property and I said, plan attached, because I had talked to her on the phone. So she responded to me, um, that afternoon, about an hour later, she said, I haven't talked to Elaine yet, but I reason, I'm reasonably sure it is isolated land subject to flooding, so there would not be a buffer zone, therefore. They would not need to apply to the commission unless they directly altered the pond, which obviously we're not doing. So I replied, um, to her, are you good with that or do you want to wait to hear from Elaine to confirm? She replied, I talked to Elaine and we both agreed. So there's a disconnect, obviously. Um, so I actually sent, uh, this email to Elaine. Um, this afternoon and I need her back. I said, hope all is well, representing the ninety-three Spring Street before the Board of Appeals tonight. And I just received a copy of your memo to the Board of Appeals stating that this project requires a filing. With, with conservation. I want to remind you that I vetted this with Rebecca and you back in January, and at that time I was advised that it only involved isolated land subject to flooding. So there would not be a buffer zone, therefore they would not need to apply to the Conservation Commission unless they directly altered the pond. Please see email chain below confirming this. Does, could you please retract your letter to Board of Appeals on this and confirm that no filing is required? So I'm hoping to hear back from her because it's pretty clear, as you saw from the correspondence, there isn't any. Um, in any event, um. I, I, I respectfully don't think it would hold you up for moving forward, it was just, it's, it would be another event if, if they came back and said, oh, there was a mistake, you need to file. I don't think it would have any, uh, impact on your, on your board, Mr. Chair.
Hey, any questions on that, board members?
Nope. I would just say we, we put a continued to. Not having any, you know, if they say. That the addition has to move or something, then would, they'd need to come back.
We would have to come back.
Yeah, so we have. Based that it doesn't affect our findings at all.
We wouldn't have to condition it, right? It would just not, uh, our findings wouldn't be applicable anymore.
Right. Or it would, it would either have to come back for a minor mod, or if you determine for a new filing if it was significant. I don't. I don't think there's going to be a filing requirement, and I think that there's going to be a filing, it's only going to be conditions on like hay bales and stuff like that. I don't think, I don't see it having an impact on the addition, that's my. That's my professional opinion. But I've been wrong before.
Okay, we have, uh, something here from, um. Eric Sherman, civil engineer. Wakefield Department of Public Works, dated February ninth. They reviewed this, we offer the following comments, revise the site plan to show the rear property line. At the paper street right of way and not to the center of the private way. Revise the building setback to the lot line accordingly.
That's been done.
Okay, do change the name, change of the name of the private way from Flesmere Ave to Felsmere Ave.
Yeah, that's an engineer, that's an engineering issue. I, 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 I look at that as not relevant, I'd rather not go back to the engineer, but that's up to the board.
Okay, and then there's a, um. Condition that they require the applicant to submit a, an I N I fee to compensate. The removal four to one ratio in the sewer system. The fee is four hundred fifty dollars per additional bedroom and is estimated to be nine hundred dollars for the two additional bedrooms for the site. Please submit the I N I fee to D P W Engineering prior to building permit approval.
Yes, you and I have had that conversation with Mr. Renault, uh, Mr. Chair. Yes, you and I have had that conversation with Mr. Renault, uh, Mr. Chair. He does not require that as a condition on the small residential projects. They just collected at the building permit fee.
Yep, okay. Just passing along your comments.
Yep, thank you.
Um, okay, now, uh, open it up to the board for questions, comments.
Yeah, I think the topography and, uh, location and outcrops and the paper street all make. First of all, it's nice that they wanted to an addition, because it's a little challenging, but I'm fine with it all.
Anybody else?
No.
No, I agree. Uh, Brian, I would just ask, what's the date of the updated plan you showed us?
Yep.
That had the updated zoning table and.
Yep.
Whatever else.
Still T A G Engineering, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is, um.
Open it up right now. So that plan. March eighth, I'll blow it up. See it on the bottom?
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
So just again, to confirm the relief that is being requested, there's a finding in general for alterations going on conforming site. Um, as well as the side step back. Um.
Yeah.
Being. Exacerbated?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it is, because there's a, there's currently a deck here.
Right.
Um, and, you know, I think, you know, the setback here is fifteen feet. So actually, he's got the fifteen foot dash line here, Dave. See it?
Yep.
And the house actually goes into it, so it's actually, yeah, it's being, it's being intensified.
So it's an intensification of already, so that's why it can be covered by the finding.
That's why it can be covered by the finding, whereas is in the back. It can't, even though he shows this dash line here, he had based that dash line on halfway across the street, which is wrong. That's why we put in the six point five to the property line.
Right, which is conforming today, that aspect, that setback's conforming today from the existing.
That's right. That's a new, that's a new nonconformity. It's not an intensification.
And so you need, the variance is strictly for that.
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's what I thought I heard. I just want to confirm. Okay.
Okay.
So those dates, those plans are dated that, and I think the architectural plans are the same. I'll just.
Yeah, it looked like there was a revision on today, actually.
Three thirteen, yeah, I'll show you those, and these will be sent to Dave and Gail first thing in the morning. Issued on six twenty-three, revised, revised today.
Yep. So I'll be the copy of that, but yeah, I captured that. Yep. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, without any other questions, we're gonna open it up to public comment. Is there any member of the public here that would wish to comment on this application? If so, please do so by using the raise hand function in Zoom. Seeing none, back to the board.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we grant a variance pursuant to one ninety-sixty-six of the bylaw. Um. Owing to circumstances related to the shape and to biography of the land and the structure situated on the, uh, property. Um, and a little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve financial hardship, financial otherwise to the petitioner, desirable relief. May be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter. And the variance is to vary the, um, rear lot line, uh, rear setback, which is currently conforming. But would be, uh, reduced to six point five feet with the proposed addition, um, as, um, depicted on the plans. From T A G Engineering, uh, revised March eighth, twenty twenty-four, and the Architectural MCO Group, uh, dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? Does that cover the conservation? I'm sorry, Dave, um, if they're gonna come back, and do you think we need a condition on that?
Yeah, I would agree with Brian. I don't think we need a condition, because if something were to change, I don't think it will. I tend to agree with them, but if it did. They'd have to come back for a potential minor mod anyway, so I don't think we have to condition it.
Yeah, I would put those conditions that the board, typical conditions that the board, you know, that it has to be built according to the plans and then, uh. Reservation for the board to determine if it's something's a minor modification.
Okay, that's fine, just double checking. All right.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Friendly amendment. I'll just, I'll accept the friendly amendment to add those standard conduct, conditions for consideration.
I'll second the amended motion.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing, seeing none, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yep. Is that yes, Chip? You're muted. That's a yes. Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we grant a finding in accordance with one ninety fifty A of our zoning bylaw. Um, that the proposed changes and alterations at ninety-three Spring Street, based on the, uh, same plans, uh, referenced in the previous motion. Um, shall increase the existing nonconforming nature of the structure with respect to the side, one of the side setbacks. But we also find that the alterations shall not substantially be more detrimental than the existing nonconformities to the neighborhood.
If I could just add, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Hatfield, Dave, if you could just reference the intensification on the lot width also, because as I mentioned.
Oh, yep, my apologies. Yeah, also on the law with, yes, so, um, amend the motion to include also, uh, lot width as well as the side setback. The intensification thereof.
Second, the amended motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing seeing nonregular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up. Under new hearings, case twenty-four thirty-five, Charles C. Curran III, Caroline A. Curran, uh. Application for a property located three Outlook Road.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrell, representing the applicants, uh. Uh, Charlie and Caroline Curran at three Outlook Road. I'm proud to say, are my neighbors. I live right down the street, so I'm at eighty-one Outlook. Um, and, um, this is a, um, request for an addition. Uh, a variance is not needed. It's only a finding. Um, and I think it's a, a, a modest request and, and, um. Quite frankly, uh, easily not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, but I don't vote, you do. I'll, I'll present it, and I'm hoping that you agree. Um, I will start with, on this, I think the site plan is probably the best. Okay. So this is, um, eighty-one, uh, I'm sorry, three Outlook, I'm at eighty-one. Um, and this is, um, as you can see in the back, that's where all the work is being done. They currently have a sunroom, uh, on the property. And that is, and there's a deck back there as well, a wood deck. They're gonna be removed, and then they're proposing a two-story addition on the back and, and a deck. Um, so, uh, as far as, um, the existing nonconformities, um, in potential intensifications. Minimum lot area in this district, single residence is twelve thousand. This is over fourteen, so it meets that requirement. Minimum, uh, frontage is a hundred, uh, and it does meet that requirement in the front, but again, this lot narrows. So currently, um, through the principal structure, it's eighty-six point six. That's gonna get intensified at eighty-three point six, uh, be, because of the fact that the lot narrow. So there would be an intensification of the existing noncompliance with lot width with this addition. Um, front setback required is twenty, it's at thirty-two, compliant and no impact with the addition. Side yard setback is where the impact is. Um, as you can see, uh, it is, um, um. It's twelve point seven now, and it's gonna go to eleven point seven. So it's gonna go a foot closer, uh, further into that side, side area. That's the intensification on the current existing nonconforming setback. This side yard setback, it easily shows here at twenty, so it meets the fifteen foot requirement. Rear is twenty-five, and even with the addition, we're gonna be at eighty-six, so, uh, it's not even close. And, um, um, he, he did the lot with, uh, schedule here. Um, so those are your, uh, existing nonconformities and the intensifications of those nonconformities. Um, I would suggest that, uh, it's not substantially more detrimental. It's only a foot. And, uh, it is kind of unique, the way that lot line, uh, tweaks in. Um, I want to show you the architecturals, if I may. Okay, so this is the, um, existing first floor on the left. That's a sunroom and the deck that are existing. Uh, second floor, it really is just a roof, uh, it's, it's, there's really nothing above that sunroom, and you're gonna see that that's gonna change. Um, these are the existing elevations, front of the house right here. Um, this is the existing, um, left side. Existing right side, and then this is the rear. So you can see currently off, off of the, on the left side, you see the, uh, sunroom and the deck that come off. These are the, uh, new floor plans, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna replace that sunroom with the family room and the deck. And then they're gonna put a primary bedroom up above with a walk-in closet and a bath. So these are now, um, the, uh, proposed elevations. And this is where, this is kind of what matters. You see from, uh, now on the, if you face the house on the right side, you can see the, the two-story. Uh, addition coming off the back with the new deck. Um, this is kind of how the deck ties in from the other side with the two, two-story addition. So these stairs, if you're facing the front of the house or on the left side of the house, this is the garage. You walk around, and that's the addition off the back, and this is how it looks from the rear. Uh, we had our engineer confirm that, uh, this addition is not, uh, within twenty feet of any, uh, neighboring dwelling. Um, and, um, so it really is, uh, not even close. Um, we also. Uh, the Currens are very well-liked in the neighborhood, so, um, we actually have. Significant neighborhood support for this request. I submitted that to the chair today. These are all of the neighbors. These are the folks on the other side of Pocket Road. Um. These are the folks that, um, the, uh, Aliskys are at one outlook, so they're the ones that are gonna be further encroached upon by the one foot. Uh, six outlook across the street, which really wouldn't even see it, ten outlook across the street. Um, the side bottoms are on the, um, opposite side as you face this house. They're on the garage side. Uh, and then some other folks down the street, so, um, nobody in the neighborhood has any issue with this, and I don't think will be, um, a significant impact. Um, it's, um, a finding request, no variance. I will respectfully, um, ask the board to. Uh, find that there's no substantial, in, um, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
None, Mr. Chair. Seems pretty straightforward.
Yep, findings pretty low bar, so, um, anybody else? I'll open it up to the public. Uh, are there any members of the public here to comment on this application? If so, please indicate the raise hand, zoom or make yourself visible and wave. Hearing seeing none, back to the board.
Mr. Chair, move that we, um, grant a finding determination pursuant to section one ninety fifty A of the bylaw. That the proposed changes, extensions, alterations at three Outlook Road, based on the plans from. Site plan from J M Associates dated February seventh, twenty twenty-four, and Architect D L Kerr revised, um, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Um, although shall increase the existing nonconforming nature of the structure with respect to the lot width and side setback. Uh, but we find that those changes shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformities to the neighborhood. Same, yeah, actually, no conditions, no conditions.
Yeah, it's a finding.
Right.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing seeing nonregular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. And approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, without going to other matters, five hundred Main Street, M Bar Wakefield, LLC slash Santander Minor Mod.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have that also, um. So I think you remember the, uh, new Santander building that is at five hundred Main Street across the middle school. They're requesting a couple of. Um, modifications as far as what they believe are minor, um, for signage. And. Pretty straightforward. So all the, all the blue, um, are what was approved originally. Um, in the black, so as I go through this, twelve, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and what they're requesting. Um, you'll notice that fourteen points to these four parking spaces. That will be relevant as we go forward, um, furthest away from the street. And you can see, as you, to refresh your memory, is a drive-through when they have parking over here, and it's kind of crossing the middle school. So the first thing they're requesting, I'm gonna go back, so on eleven, so this side of the building. What they're, what they're looking to do is they're requesting to put, um, some privacy vinyl. Um, on like the lower quarter to third of the building. It's about two feet high. Um, they're having some issues with pedestrians that are like going up to windows and looking in. Uh, at employees while they're working on computers, and, and they're very concerned with privacy, as you know, banks, um. You know, i- i- and it's become an issue for them, so this is the reason that they want to do this. Um. I said to them, you know, it, it's arguable that, you know, this really isn't a sign issue. Uh, but, you know, out of respect for the board, this is site plan approval, um, that was done. I did not want to just do this, and then, um. Have you guys call me in and say, we know, what are you doing? Um, we should have known about that, um, so. Um, I thought it was, um, a good idea to bring it before the board to tell you what they want to do, and hopefully you don't have any issues with it. Um, I have, I have a. You might not be able to see it, but I actually have them send me a sample. This might, I'll probably give you at least an idea. This is kind of what goes on, so it's gonna just be kind of cloudy on those portions of the windows.
You got to stop sharing Brian's shows.
Oh. Good point. You see it, you see it on mic? Yep, so it just kind of, kind of stick on. So that, that's, that's the material. That's what they're looking to do, and this, this side of the building is facing the parking lot, so it's really just two windows. Um, then this is the other side of the building that faces Melrose, so they're looking to do it on the, on the lower part there. And then I'm gonna come back to this, and then this is the front of the building. You're not looking to do it on these big windows, because that's like the, where the ATM and stuff is, or the entry, they really don't need it. That's the entry of the building from the side, from the parking lot. But this is where, where, you know, they're concerned with privacy, so this is where they want to put the two-foot panel on this. So that's, that's the first request. Um, the second one relates to those four parking spaces. Um, they've had problems, um, as you can imagine, at certain times a day. Um, particularly in the afternoon, when maybe kids are being picked up, that it's a nice big parking lot that people can stage and wait for people, and. So it's become an issue for them. Um, they're, they don't want to make a big deal over it, but what, what they need to do is they need to make sure that at least the, you know. Four of the parking spaces are marked that, um, you know, sometimes people make comments, well, I'm a customer of the bank, or, you know, they run into the ATM and use it for a minute, and then sit in their car for, you know, for twenty-five minutes, so. So, um, so what they would like to do on those four parking spaces is just put these si- simple signs, seven feet high, that say. Santander Parking for Customer Only While Conducting Bank Business. Um, just to kind of hopefully say, hey, if you want to park in the other spaces, we're, we're good neighbors, you know, we, we, we don't want to cause problems, but we need at least four. Uh, during this time period for our customers that are. during this time period for our customers that are coming into the bank. So those are the, those are the requests. And I'm gonna go back to this plan, so you can kind of see where those parking spaces are. I don't think you're really even gonna see those from the streets, not like they're up front or anything like that, they're, they're they're only one foot, they're only a foot and a half in a foot. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Are they not, this one on a, on a post, Brian?
It's ready, Chip, galvanized, finished it?
Yeah, they, they're doing that, right?
Yes.
So this is a fifth sign?
No, four of them, four of these.
Oh, those are, they're not going on the building, they're going on posts like that?
On a post, yeah, right at the end of the parking space.
I was, I thought it would be on the building.
Nope, four of them on posts. Right at the end of the parking space.
Any other questions, comments?
Brian, do you, do you think the two feet of privacy film is high enough? Because it looks like it's less than four feet from the ground on the top.
Yeah, I asked that, because Sue me and they thought that it would be fine, because their people are sitting down, I, I
Okay, I mean, like, I'm, I'm short, but I'll be able to see inside on the top.
They just wanted some kind of buffer for people, that's all.
Okay.
Oh, they turned their computer to the other side. I don't consider those signs, Brian, those are fine with me, those, that's window tint. To me, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't disagree, but I wanted you to make that determination, not me.
Plus they're coming back with everything, so it's easy.
Yeah.
I guess on the signs after, after doing all that work on the building, the signs, I would have had them choose a nicer post than what'd you call it, corrugated, still whatever.
Galvanized?
Galvanized, I was gonna say, corrugated didn't sound right. I don't know if I, hell, I'm gonna die on that, just seems like a lot of work to then have to put in this. You know, like, see everywhere around town.
The handicap one's already next to it, right, that's same kind of style.
Same, same style, same thing.
You know, Brian, can you put the plan back up real quick?
Again, sure.
I noticed one of them said out of scope, was that from earlier, out of scope?
Yeah, that's something that was removed, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the one on, on main, that's
Yeah, there was something that was gonna be a sign there that I think a T A C did not want it.
Okay.
Block the view.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just want to refresh, make sure, okay, thank you, yeah.
Oh, that was, I think that was, I think, I think going back, that was like the Santander freestanding little sign that they were
It was.
And you guys said, no.
No.
Yeah, there's plenty of signage, yeah. Okay, seems, seems reasonable, I'm fine.
Anybody else? I have no problems either, so.
Mr. Chair, a move that we find that the proposed sign changes at five hundred Main Street according to the plans created by Image One dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty four are deemed a minor modification to the board's original special permit for this project.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion domain seconded, any further discussion? Garanting seen none, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, next up, twenty-one dash four to twenty-one dash six, five eighty-one Salem Street, Granite Family Realty Trust signage.
Yes, this is the multifamily, again, Brian McGrail representing the applicant on this, this is this is the guys that did, just finished on three thirty, the three thirty-six Salem Street that you recently approved, if you remember, they did the apartment building at five eighty-one Salem on, towards the Melrose line. And your board retained jurisdiction on signage. So the building is now done and occupied, and they would like to just finish that up, so I went back to show you what they would like to do for signage. And hopefully obtain your approval. So, part of the site plan approval was is a landscape wall that was approved. So it's been built now, it's an existing three-foot-high concrete block wall. And this is it, this is what they're proposing is a seventy-two inch by eighteen inch high sign that will go on it, on that would sit right on it, and that's what they're requesting. It's, 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 these, it's made of like a a poly material, and these letters are blue, they're gonna be cut and placed on, so they're raised letters. They will not be bigger than three and a half inches. The top ones. I know you don't like phone numbers, we were hoping to be able to put their website, because it just a lot, it really is, it's effective for people to want to, you know, drive them by, hey, I, I might want to live there, how do I you know, not a number to call, but just log on here, and you can, you can find out the information. I thought that was kind of unique. And with the times that we're in.
Are the specs for that sign in those minute
Yeah, I have, yeah, they are, but I have a better one that I would, let me share that, Dave, thank you.
Yeah, you know, we like the details.
Yeah, I
We know what we're gonna get.
While you're looking, Brian, can I just say, I know we can't really regulate this piece, but if you're talking to people who are naming places in the future, can we quit it with the residence? Or the residences, like, we get it, and everywhere else, there's one in Sogus by Route One, we got Nahat Residence, this is like the fifteenth residence in, within like a one square mile of us. Like, if you're gonna actually, I don't even care if it has a name, but if you're gonna name it, let's not name it The Residence, how lazy and easy is that? It's just so ridiculous. I mean, I don't even know what Grayson Lofts, I think they, they straight up told us their branding, people came up with it, but at least it's creative and unique. The residences, we get people live here, fine.
What do people think about the website?
I, I can't, I don't even think it's noticeable, it just looks like a part of the sign, it's not like a phone number that pops out at you, it almost looks like part of the address. To me, I don't know, I don't, that doesn't really bother me. But.
Any precedent for it?
It's the first time I've seen it.
Yep, same here.
I mean, if people really want, if, if that wasn't there, they would just Google the residence at five eighty-one Salem Street and come up with the same thought, so. I don't know, I don't even know if it's necessary, you just Google that. You would just Google the residence.
I don't think they're gonna
Or even just five eighty-one Salem Street.
Isn't a web address basically the phone number of today? Same thing.
Yeah. I, I got you on that, Mickey, probably.
That's where I was going, Mick, that doesn't seem too bad here, but there might be a point where they come in.
Once we start here, that's it.
Is, Brian, do you know if the website is active? Actually, I can just look at it, never mind.
I guess, I guess my feeling is that these are signs for location, not for advertising, I'm not in favor of it. Kind of like, so the argument that it's today's telephone number makes me even more not in favor of it.
Yeah, right. So, Brian, do we have an actual sign plan with those specs, you were showing an email or something, right?
Well, this, this tells you the size of it, Dave. Yeah, eighteen by seventy-two, and then I would attach this to the letter, the building inspector, it tells you the specs, the letters to be cut from point five clear acrylic.
Yeah.
Reverse painted blue, maximum height of three and a half inch letters. Backboard aluminum frame, polyethylene core. So if you approve, if you approve this, I would just, you know, this would be attached to Dave's letter to, to, and that's all that's needed here.
No, no lighting, no lighting, right, Brian?
No lighting, no.
Just back to the name real quick, I went to it, it's not even a website designed specifically for that, it has a picture of Boston, so.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna, you know.
It is, it is a picture of Boston, it says that they own a building in Wakefield, and that's one one three, but it doesn't even maybe if it was strictly for this, it might make a difference, but.
If that goes, if that goes, would you want the residence at five eighty-one Salem Street centered on the sign?
I would, I would recommend not.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you would approve this, then what I would do is I would just have them redo it, and then submit it to the chair for his, his approval. The board would consider doing that.
Yep, but the plan that you did show, can you just not add, is it an updated plan by whom again?
Oh, the, the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, hold on.
Then we can say to be modified, too.
Yeah.
But at least we voted on what was presented. Whoops, my one.
It's been pretty nice apartments, thirty-two hundred a month.
I think that's just the going rate, Greg.
So just to, you know, to give you guys an idea, so as you know, you know, with that mentioned Boundary Street is being built, the Crystal Lumber Site by Paul Di Biase. And, and Majeure is doing the construction, you probably see it going up. They barely out of the ground, and they already have a waiting list of over fifty people. To buy. So.
Okay. For, for all units or for
I don't know, they have like
Affordable ones or?
I don't mean to embellish it, I mean, they have a list of like fifty people that are interested, like are calling, you know, you know, not, not like fifty I'm buying, but they'd like
Yeah, yeah.
They, they, they have any, they're not even listing it, and their phones ringing off the hook. So this is the Hayes Engineering Plan, Dave, dated August thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And that meets the zoning requirement that's eight feet back.
So is this, was this a condition on the plan, so it's not really a minor modification?
No, the board reserved jurisdiction.
Right, 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 so it's not a minor mod, it's a we're just voting on the signage.
Yeah.
Let me just make sure, hold on. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, we good?
Yeah.
So I'll move that we approve the proposed sign updates for the front sign presented tonight by Hayes Engineering dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three with the intended modification to remove the website address shown on the sign, and to center the letters for the sign, for the sign of the building on the, on the proposed sign. And that's it.
Seconded.
Do we, do we need to say that we give permission to the chair to okay that new submission?
Sure, I'll, I'll make that friendly image. And we, we accept that the, or the chair can approve that, that modification when received, yes.
Second the amended motion.
Right, motion's been made, seconded, any discussion?
I'd like to take the word friendly off of it. I just have to do something tonight, I'm exhausted. No, I'm only kidding, only kidding.
All right, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, all right. Clerk Board comments. Uh, Joe, anything on?
Nah, nothing. Nothing new.
One comment, don't forget next Wednesday night, five thirty at Harrington's. Uh, for Jim McCain's event.
So, Mr. Chair, I do have something that, that Autobahn Road, the sign company, so, I don't know if folks saw the response. I did take a picture of the sign, it is a banner sign, obviously, and their response was, I meant to have it open, but they're like, oh, we don't plan to put a sign there, but we have to take that down, right? The answer is yes, right, it's a banner, it's temporary, you gotta take it down. Adolf Gale, can you check with?
They said they didn't even know it was up. The sign company.
Right, but like when's, the clock's already ticking, right, they gotta, I would imagine they don't want the old tenant's name still on the building. They can't leave what's there, that other tenant's sign's gotta come down, and the banner's gotta come down. But I don't know how many days it's already been up. Or when they're in there and operational, that they get thirty more days and then gotta go, right?
Yeah, and Tom, I think we have to do a letter for that one, I'm not sure we did. A modification, yeah. I think that's what they're waiting for to pull the permit.
Okay.
Oh, to do the other side.
I'll talk to you about that, yeah.
Yeah, I thought we were caught up.
I know, I did too, and then when I read that email, I said, oh, jeez, and looked, and we hadn't done that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so again, I, I just want to bring it up, because we, we saw the correspondence from them, so we just want to make it clear that, yes, it does actually have to come down. But exactly when, I mean, maybe when we do the letter and we follow up with them, say, just as noted that that should come down by whatever, thirty days from the date of this letter, or sixty days, whatever the right answer is from Benny or whoever. Whatever the building inspector recommends. We don't want to get into cease and desist things, but they should at least be given a timetable. So, I couldn't find it in the bylaw, like the, the new sign overlay says temporary banners like thirty days. But the old bylaw that this applied here, I can't, I couldn't find a number of days.
The old bylaw didn't have it, Dave.
Right, so.
So what was it, what's gonna happen with the new signed by law that's never gone into effect?
Yeah.
Not the overlay district, the overlay district's clear.
Yes. But I think we should still give them a time, so it doesn't just sit there, and the banner starts flapping in the breeze, so. It's gotta come down at some point, realistically.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
About it for me too, other than to say, I'm sorry you had to witness that, but I called one of the, I caught that previous attorney from a previous case tonight in a bold-faced lie. I was gonna call him out on it, but guy's tough to deal with. Anyway, any other comments? We good to adjourn?
No, I'll most make a motion to accept the minutes from our brief yet effective meeting of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and the minutes thereof.
Seconded.
Do a voice vote on favor?
I, I
I wasn't there, so I technically abstained.
It was, it was a quick read.
I heard. Of course, the one I have to miss.
I know.
Hours-long meeting, and you guys
We said Greg's not here, let's blow the rest. Greg, you're, you're on the short timers list anyway, so don't lie.
When is that date, Gail? Do you know?
What date?
Greg's date.
Hopefully the next one.
I think you got two, three more, right?
Two and
One more. One more?
Just one more, you never told us.
I didn't apply, I told, no, I told Cherry.
I thought it ends, end of April, no?
Oh, yeah, I think it does, the end of April.
I'm stuck.
I didn't realize that's when you were, that was it.
Actually, no, no, Gail, there's, tell him about the new rule.
Yeah, that's right.
That he's heard so far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have new rules now.
I'll make sure I'm there. And what, don't you just get kicked off if you miss a couple meetings in a row?
No such luck, you still.
There is a rule out there on that, Greg.
Yeah, there is.
All right, I thought I had, I just lost my train of thought there, but must be late, so probably a good time just to
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we already did that.
No, we did the minutes, I don't think we had
Oh, motion to adjourn, that's where I was probably going on.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
All approved? See you later.
Bye.